Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to a special meeting of the Select Board on Thursday, July 6th, 6 at 3 o'clock. We have a few pressing items on the agenda. First, let me point out that this meeting is being held pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which included the option for public bodies in the Commonwealth to hold public meetings remotely for an additional two years until March 31st, 2025. So with that, we have with us today Select Board members Musto, Zoll, and Bradley. And we can begin, if everyone's ready, with Item 2, which is Discussion Approval Letter to Mass DOT regarding Intersection Improvement Project at Randolph Ave and Chickatahut Road. All right. With that, I will ask Mr. Milano has presented a draft, and I'll ask him to tee it up for us, and then we can begin the discussion.
Sure, thank you. I met with Ms. Musto last week to discuss drafting of this letter after our last Select Board meeting, based on comments made by Board members in that meeting. We tried to consolidate those comments into what we put together back, hitting, you know, references to what can be done in the meantime, as well as thanking Mass DOT for coming, thanking for them for committing to a corridor study, but asking questions about whether it makes sense to proceed with the corridor study, excuse me, proceed with the roundabout design and project while that corridor study is undergoing. It does ask for Mass DOT to pause, and that's the draft we've put together, open to comments, questions, suggestions, and changes from the Select Board, and happy to incorporate them. Mr. Zulish, I'll turn it back to you.
Comments or questions from the members? Ms. Musto?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just got a draft with some of those changes. I don't know if you want to walk it through on your changes that you had suggested?
Sure, if you want to do, I can do that first, if you wish.
Maybe. Everyone, whatever the board wants to do.
All right, let's do that. Nick, can you publish that to the Board, and I'll kind of walk the thoughts through you? So what I did, I left a lot of the language, but I kind of moved it, for the most part, moved it around. And my focus on this, and I think the first focus really should be the short-term measures and pointing out the danger that we, the danger of the intersection, and the need for short-term measures, and to ask DOT to make immediate material measures to improve safety, including, we have the changing the signal timing, incorporating left-hand turn signals, and I also include leveling the incline on the road approaching the intersection from the south, which would be from Randolph. And then, so that's what I, my suggestion would be to put that first. Those are the kind of first two paragraphs. And then go into the discussion of the corridor study. And you'll see those two paragraphs are left the same. Paragraph that's deleted after that, that was really what was moved up to the beginning, talking about safety and short-term measures. And then, in the next paragraph, I kind of revised the paragraph asking for the site meeting, saying that, you know, it's important for them to understand the concerns of local residents and for us to understand how it fits with the needs of those who live near and travel on the road, asking for the meeting, asking for the additional information. And at the end, I was uncomfortable using, I was comfortable, personally, I was comfortable saying, we can't support the roundabout, the final roundabout, until we have the information and the completion of the traffic study. I was uncomfortable with calling for a pause, personally. You know, I think they should really focus on short-term measures, and to the extent that they can work on whatever the final solution is along with the corridor study, I'd want them to do that. I'm just concerned about suggesting any kind of pause here. So I'm comfortable saying we can't support it until we get the information. I'm not comfortable saying that we should have any kind of pause just because of the danger of the intersection. That's, so that's kind of what, that's kind of what my thoughts were. Roxanne, Ms. Musto?
Thank you. I liked a lot of the changes. The only thing is, I guess, with regards to a pause, I think that's important, because otherwise, they will still go forward with the design. And I think that was the whole point of it, that we wanted them to, you know, look at the whole thing. And to your point, the short-term measures, I mean, the things that you identified, for instance, flattening out the incline and turn signals and so forth, that was supposed to be done years ago, and the engineers years ago had put that forward. So I think if we don't say to pause on that design, they will go forward and still do that, you know, work on the design. So I think it needs to be a little stronger with regards to that, because theoretically, if they were going to do the changes that were identified, that we're talking about, that may even solve the whole problem to begin with. But I don't think, I don't think they'll stop unless we, you know, the residents asked us that they don't support that. So, I mean, I would hate for them, they're already at 75% design. That was the reason for having this meeting today, was to actually have them, you know, pause on this for now. And I think I would like to see that put back in.
And I'll ask for comments or questions. The only thing I would say, Roxanne, is I understand that. We do say, and I was comfortable leaving in, you know, we think that you should complete the corridor study before completing the design or constructing the roundabout. I think that's totally appropriate. I just, as I said before, I was just a little concerned about using the language of a pause on this. But anyway, Mr. Zoll.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, I like this letter as a whole. I think it's, and I like the way that you framed it here, really kind of starting off with the short-term fixes, which are the most critical. You know, particularly, we've, you know, I'm not in town, but I've heard already there was another accident on 28th, just this week. I wonder if it's worth pointing out to the DOT or sort of, along Ms. Musto's line, it's probably going to save them dollars if they pause or at least slow down, or, you know, if it's possible that their design is going to be able to take in new changes based on the study, then great. But maybe they should, you know, they should report back to us. If they feel like, you know, the corridor study may lead to some changes in terms of how they're thinking about this project, but they're confident that, you know, that that won't affect their design for the specific roundabout, it just may affect how they're thinking about the downstream traffic. But making the point of, it's for the Massachusetts taxpayers sort of more broadly, would be better for them to think about if their design that they're going to be putting in could be fundamentally altered, and therefore, they need to go back to the drawing board based on what comes out of the corridor study. And again, there's probably a much less verbose way of saying this, but if there's, you know, pointing that out, that we would expect any information obtained through that corridor study to affect the design of the roundabout, you know, it just doesn't seem to make a lot of fiscal sense to proceed with a study that, you know, proceed with a roundabout that could be fundamentally altered based on what that study would look like. And I think, Ms. Musto, is that kind of along the lines to what you were thinking?
I think partially, partially, obviously, the cost and, you know, having to go back and design it. But we don't even know if the roundabout is going to be the right option, because on their own document, they had three other options that have no information. So I think if we don't say pause, I think that they will continue that. And then we're going to be in a situation where we get data, and maybe the data supports or doesn't support that. But then they're going to keep going forward. So I actually think you do have to say, I think you have to be direct, really, in a way, because they'll take it and, you know, I mean, I thought that our last meeting, it was sort of understood that we wanted a few things done beforehand, and then they come back with a 75% design from 25%. So I think that, you know, if we listen to what the residents are saying, and to what Mike put in here, which are great short-term, may even be long-term viable, you know, solutions to the problem, I think we really should be putting in, you know, we want them to pause it, because they will go forward with it otherwise, with this kind of a letter. They'll just be like, okay, we'll keep on going. So that's the only thing I'm thinking of. And you bring up a lot of great points about cost and everything. And again, it was good enough to do years ago, they just never did it. So, and again, maybe it's different now, we don't know. We have to see the data. But that being said, I think if we don't put in a stronger verbiage, they'll just go right ahead.
Mr. Zoll?
Thank you, sorry. My mouse is giving me a little difficulty, thank you, Mr. Chair. I want, so I tend to agree with Ms. Musto on these points. And I wonder if we, you know, the language that we use when we say pause, because I'm not sure that we have the authority to demand that they pause, but we could encourage them to pause, or we could strongly suggest that they pause, you know, to, you know, for a host of reasons, until the corridor study is complete. That seems to me just to be, you know, common sense. But I would think like a strongly suggest, or strongly urge, or strongly encourage a pause would make sense.
Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with what member Zoll just said. I recall asking the folks that were in front of us at the last meeting whether or not they could do a pause. And they had said, I believe that, I believe that they had said that that's not up to them, it's up to people higher than them. I don't know that they can pause, but I think asking or strongly wording a pause is absolutely something we could do. But I'm not sure that DOT will take that into consideration at all, given how far they are on the roundabout at this point in time. But I personally would like to see the corridor study before they continued, and I'm not sure that we can ask for that. I just don't know whether or not we have that kind of authority.
Ms. Musto?
Thank you. I would say all good points that everyone's bringing up. I think that if we, you know, again, the town, yes, it's a state railway, but it goes through Milton, right? So I think anything we can do, and we have, I notice we have a CC to Timelte, Driscoll, and Fluker Oakley. So I think that's important, too, to get them on board with this idea. But we're here to represent the residents, and the residents have had these concerns about this roundabout. And I think that, I think it should be strongly worded that we're, you know, besides a corridor study, we also want to know what those other alternatives, how those alternatives would fit into this. And one of them is actually this left-hand signalization as part of, that was one of the alternatives. So again, you know, whether they'll listen or not, I think it should be strongly worded that we, you know, we, either we, you know, are strong, we want them to pause this. And I think we can only do the ask, but don't forget, this is also going to Gina Fiandaca. So, you know, that's the Secretary of Transportation. So, you know, she certainly could pause it, you know? She'd have the authority to pause it. And I think if we don't, you know, I think we have to at least try, you know?
So, oh, Mr. Zoll, I was just going to say, so you have assuaged my concerns about that, particularly since we all agree that the short-term fixes should be upfront. So the only, the only issue, it seems to me, and it sounds like we now are all in agreement, is in that last sentence, or that, I'm sorry, the penultimate paragraph, where it says at this time, the Select Board, previously what it said, and we can put back in, after the roundabout design, we would reinsert what was in there originally, which says, "And is asking that Mass DOT pause its design and permitting work on the proposed roundabout until additional," so that was the sentence. And so if everyone has agreed to put that clause back in, and I'll read it again, and this is the original clause that was circulated, "And is asking that Mass DOT pause its design and permitting work on the proposed roundabout, and then until additional traffic report information is shared with the town." So if we, if we put that back in, are we all, are we all of one mind here?
Yeah, I think if we could see, I'm not sure if Nick has the ability, Mr. Chair, to edit. It looks like we're looking at a PDF, but if there's a...
It's a PDF, yeah. I mean, I can send around a, I might, actually, I can probably, I can probably share the, I can probably share the...
Yeah, if we could just see the Word document on the screen, and then we could, you know, sort of vote to approve it, then just for the sake of expediency, I feel like we don't want to wait, again, I think the reason that we're meeting is because we wanted to get this off as quickly as possible. And I think it would be great if we can see a document, we could just approve right now.
Yep, so if Lynn or Nick can allow me to share, I'll share the Word version of this. Let's see. I've got to get it on my desktop first.
It would be okay now.
Yeah, it is, I just got to get it on my desktop, hold on. Let's see, so that means I got to open the file. Okay. All right, so. Let me go back to you all. And see if I can share that, there we go. All right, can everyone see that? All right, so this is the document with the changes. And then what we would reinsert is right here. And we would say the original language, which I will... I'll track it so you can see it. And is asking that Mass DOT pause, pause its design and permitting work on the proposed roundabout. So that is, that is the original language. Can you make sure, you all can still see that? Okay. Okay. Just get it back up here. For some reason, when I look at the document, I can't see you all, so I'm going to have to kind of go back and forth, I think. So, comments or questions? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion. Yes, I'll make a motion that we accept the letter with these changes that we've identified and discussed here today.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Any desire to look at it? And you want me to scroll it all, Ben, or you?
I trust that you're showing us the same.
No, no, I am, I just, if you want, if you want to do one more, if you want to do one more read-through on the screen.
No, I had read through it before, so for me, I don't have any other issues. I think this is, I think this is a good solution here.
Great, all right. So, oh, Ms. Musto?
Mr. Cliffing, when it's, once it's approved, will you send us a fresh copy?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Going to manipulate this so I can see everyone. Okay, so motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor going down, Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Okay, Item 3, thank you all. So we will get that letter out, at worst, tomorrow morning. So if we can't get, we'll see if someone can sign my name this afternoon and send that out. If not, it'll go out tomorrow morning.
Mike, you're still sharing your screen, just so you know.
Oh, yeah, I can probably stop that.
I was saying, at least.
Yeah, there we go, that's better. Roxanne, did you have your hand up, you all set?
I did have my hand up for the next issue, if we're on that yet.
Item 3, Discussion Approval Committee Appointment to the Youth Task Force. Molly, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, Molly Panario Langer.
So could I speak at this point, or?
Yeah, please, yeah.
Okay, so I guess what I wanted to say is, the purpose of this meeting was just to do the DOT, the roundabout, because we wanted to get the letter out right away. And I understand that this came up with this appointment. But I feel that we should be doing these appointments at our regular meeting. Yeah, this is a 3 o'clock in the afternoon meeting, and we had told people we were just doing the DOT thing. So I would strongly suggest, in the spirit of transparency, that we put it off to the next meeting, which I'm sure it'll get approved, but it's just, I feel like it's more about the issue of, you know, making things more transparent for the residents.
Yeah, Mr. Zoll?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So just on this, we're trying to get this Youth Task Force to meet as quickly as possible, and that's why we wanted, I wanted to try to get this approved, because we've got time reserved for the week, the week after our Select Board meeting. So I wanted to have people have a chance to get prepared. And since this is a, this appointment is given to us from the Coalition, and since I, you know, I had asked to put this on the agenda in time to adhere to the public meeting laws, so that this item was on the agenda for public notice, I would suggest that we proceed with, that was the impetus for asking for the, for this name to be added, so that we can try to get this together. I've been working with Lynn to try to find a time for the task force to meet as quickly as possible, given the severity of the, you know, crisis in the woods that we heard from the chief at our last meeting.
And I will add that the thought was to respond to that concern, and also to ratify it at our next meeting, and to talk about it at our next meeting. And, you know, certainly, it's fully transparent, but, Ms. Musto?
Yes, my thought was more that, I know that even when we were doing this letter, when I had spoken with Nick with this letter, he was saying that we could, you know, would we postpone it till Tuesday? Because our meeting is on Tuesday, today's Thursday, so it's not that many days. I just think if we start doing things in this manner, this is one instance, but it sets a precedent for other instances that will do it. I mean, I'm sure it'll get approved at the Tuesday meeting. You could always, you know, have this meeting set for when you're planning to meet. I just think that, you know, these meetings, my understanding of these extra meetings are supposed to be for things that we have to get done, whether it's something that has to be done in a short timeframe. You know, like this, we were trying to get that, we told people that we were doing this meeting for this. You know, an emergency situation, we did that for, you know, the Milton Fest and the, you know? I just feel like, you know, it was setting us up in a not-good light. I mean, we're talking three days, you know? And I think that's my only issue, is I think that it's more, you know, whether, because we could do this with every other committee, could say the same thing. There's a lot, you know, I just think Tuesday is, what, three days away? And you could certainly have your meeting set up in the meantime to go.
I think Mr. Zoll has his hand up, and then had his physical hand up, and then Ms. Bradley had her virtual hand up after. So we'll go with Mr. Zoll, and then to the real hand, and then to the virtual hand.
Sorry, the button's just not working very well for me. I just like to say, I kind of, I'm not crazy about the town here. I don't feel like there's anything underhanded that's going on. We heard about a crisis in the woods that's happening on a regular basis. And this is, we put this on public agenda. This should be a straight up and down, this is a Coalition nominee to a task force that needs to meet as quickly as possible. To suggest that it's underhanded, or that we're somehow going around the public when we followed the letter of the law on this, and we're listening to the public's recommendation to appoint somebody to the committee, I just find that language to be very unhelpful. And I'm sorry to hear it in this meeting, because I think this is a very straight up and down, and that's why I put it on the agenda. And I don't appreciate the implication that this is somehow some sort of a nefarious move. I think that's out of bounds.
Ms. Bradley, are you all set?
Yeah, I, yes, I think I am. I just wanted to say that I have, I have the same interpretation as Mr. Zoll, is that we put this on a public meeting announcement within 20, plenty of time. The reason for emergency meetings of a Select Board is something that has to be done with less than 48 hours' notice to the public, which is why we did that for the change of that liquor license. I, this is not even our, our pick, I don't know the right word here, but it's not our suggestion, we've already completed our suggestions. This is a suggestion from the Milton Coalition, and this should be a rubber stamp, just like the, like liquor licenses, or the use of the gazebo, or anything like that. So I'm fully able and ready to vote on this this evening, Mr. Chair, or this afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Musto?
Thank you. First, I want to clear something up. I think to imply that I'm suggesting something nefarious or anything, that is not what I was suggesting. I'm talking about process. And what I'm saying is, is that we have always done the appointments for our committees during our regular meeting. We have never, as far as I can recall, do them at these other kind of meetings. So to say, I don't appreciate the implication that you're trying to imply about me, Mr. Zoll, because that is not the intent. The intent is simply about the process, and that is all I was getting at, was the process. So to think it's anything more than that, or think something else, I think really you should apologize for that, because that is not what the implication is. The implication is simply process. Since I've been on the board, since I've been watching Select Board, these kind of appointments for any of our committees are done at our regular meeting. That's all I was getting at. And if we add it on here, that was what I was getting at, simple. So I would appreciate not trying to imply something else about me. I don't like that.
So, so, Mrs. Zoll, if I may, before we get to Mrs. Zoll, I will just say that it's not unprecedented to take actions that have to be done on a short-term basis, that are not emergencies, in meetings that are added to the agenda. So it's not unprecedented to take actions like this at meetings that we've added to the agenda. Mr. Zoll?
I was just going to say, I'll read through and listen to how this, your earlier words, Ms. Musto. And if I was misinterpreting them, I will certainly apologize to you. And I would expect the same coming back from you to me. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other comments or questions or motions on this? Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to appoint, and I'm sorry if I say this name incorrectly as well, I believe it's Maile Panaro Langer, to the Youth Task Force, for the position from the Milton Coalition.
And I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I'm just really sorry if I said that name incorrectly.
I was, I was thinking Molly Panario Langer, but I'm not sure whether it's a hearty or softy.
You know, in the future, I wonder if we can have people write in the phonetic pronunciations of their names, so that we can make sure that we don't make mistakes going forward?
Yeah, yeah. All right, any further discussion? Going across the screen as I see it, Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, that is, those are our items on the agenda. Item 4 is a German.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for the meeting on a Thursday afternoon, and have a great rest of the week, a great weekend. And we will see you next Tuesday night at 7 o'clock, I believe. So we'll see you there. Take care, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.